The elderly, we provide over six hundred and fifty hot meals a month to the elderly in Opelika and Auburn. And then, we also are providing a lot of support for domestic violence victims. So, please, please, do not cut the grant. You know, we just want to continue to be funded at the level we have been funded at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And his wife Tracy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I just was here in support of Salvation Army. I made some phone calls to commission members to express our concern with a reduction in funding. I'd love an increase in funding because the amount that we currently do receive, we do appreciate, it doesn't go as far as it used to because the numbers have grown for those who are seeking bus tickets to get home safely to family when they're stranded here. Certainly, the homeless population has been increasing. And I believe those in the sheriff's office regularly send folks to us. And we are very happy to take those people, want to serve those folks that they serve, or that they send our way, that have needs. And so, I just plead on behalf of the Salvation Army before you and say that twenty-five-hundred dollars is not a lot, three thousand is not a lot of money, particularly when you look at other budget items that don't meet direct services of citizens in this county. And so, I ask, please, not to reduce those that offer direct services by twenty percent cut across the board. Those are the people who need you the most. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tracy, that well said. Thank you.
Michael Evan Johnson. Michael, I believe it's Evan Johnson.
I'm here, but I'm not here to speak.
Okay, all right, sir. Larry Williams.
I like white as well, sir.
All right. Are you here to address the commission?
No, sir, I was here for the meeting.
Peter Bird.
I'm not asking for funding, I'm asking for time. And I'd like the railroad issue to be placed back on the agenda so that we can discuss the facts that I presented last month.
Mr. Bird, we're not going to place your item on the agenda again unless you can get a commissioner to sponsor it. Our agenda is for us to accomplish our work, not for you to vent your grievances. So, if one of these commissioners would be glad to sponsor, we'll be happy to put it on the agenda.
Do you disagree with the comments that I made, the statements, the documents that I presented to the commission in my presentation?
Mr. Bird, you can use the three minutes however you want to. I've told you what we're going to have to have for the agenda.
Well, I read the county commission minutes for that meeting, and nothing was said about Aldott's letter addressing the county engineers neglect to provide the plans. And during that time, a school teacher was hit. And I asked after the presentation for y'all to comment. Mr. Lawrence said that he needed to review the allegations. I came last commission meeting and asked for comments, and no one cared to comment. So, I'm again asking to be put on the agenda so that y'all can address the comments.
You'll need to get a commissioner to sponsor it on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Stilwell, everybody's here. Your consent agenda contains the minutes of the meeting, Hill, September twelfth, also two listings of claims, one list that have been paid, one that need ratification, the other is awaiting your approval for payment. Any questions about the minutes of the claim?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signal five, say a aye. Anybody opposed? You can announce. First up is Kevin Eland. I'm sorry, excuse me, excuse me, I got one item ahead. We have first reading of the Lee County Recreation Board. I believe we have one position, Mr. Stilwell, is that correct?
One in Commissioner Ekman, one in Commissioner Long, and one in Commissioner Harris.
So, we have three. Okay. One in District One, one in District Three, and one in District Five. I think we have several citizen interest forms, I'm not sure for what school district. The members of the board are appointed by school district. Commissioner Ekman's would be the Lurch Popple School District, Commissioner Long's would be Smith Station School District, and Commissioner Harris' is the other Lurch Popple district, I believe.
Yeah, well, I got two.
He's got four going.
I got four going.
Which of these is the top today?
Johnson.
Well, that'd make four, we only had three.
But we, Ms. Fraser resigned, so her is not till, not open yet.
Hand of term in Borah, all right. Two in District Five.
Because my representative, they have to be from my district.
No, ma'am. All right, Commissioner Ekman, how many names are, or who you putting forward for first reading?
One, Alice Buchanan.
All right. Do we have other citizen interest forms? Okay. Mr. Long.
Well, excuse me, there is another gentleman out there, but I don't see his form yet.
It's on your desk, the Galen Palmer?
Okay, Galen Palmer. Is that for the same position?
But there's another gentleman in the audience.
Oh.
No, I got, I got Mr. Holly.
Mr. Holly, well, I think he turned in a form, but we don't have his form.
Mr. Holly's is in your package.
Oh, okay, excuse me. Sorry.
I don't see it, ma'am, but I'm going to do that.
I didn't reverse it.
Got it.
And Mr. Johnson.
All right, Commissioner Harris, what's yours?
Mr. Holly and Mr. Johnson.
Holly and Johnson, all right. And we have Palmer's form, I don't know what district.
He's in John Andrews District.
Okay, so Commissioner Harris, you've got three names for two slots. So, that would take a vote. Commissioner Ekman, you've only got one name for your slot, and Commissioner Long, what's your?
Rex.
Rex Ball, I believe he's incumbent on that. He is, all right. All right. Then I'm going to need a motion. One name in one, one name in three, and two of the three names in District Five will need to be specified for first reading. Commissioner Harris?
Okay, one in, Mr. Johnson, who I already mentioned, that's one of my names for Borah. And that's the only one, that's the only one for that reason. And Mr. Holly, that's one from Lurch Popple.
All right, Mr. Johnson's from Borah, District, and Mr. Holly is from Lurch Popple.
So, this is two separate, these are two separate positions?
Two separate seats. But I have a Mr. Palmer.
We have to pick one, one or two.
I didn't understand, sorry.
Yeah. So, I was picking Mr. Holly and Johnson.
Okay, so you're picking Holly and Johnson for your two seats, okay? So, I need, still need a motion and a second.
Okay, I move that we accept Alice Buchanan, Stephen Holly, and John Johnson.
And Rex Ball.
Pardon?
And Rex Ball.
Oh, sorry, yes.
All right.
My second.
We got a motion and a second, other discussion. All in favor, signal five, say a aye. Any opposed? Motion denied. Ms. Eland, I'm sorry. Now, we're on your side of the problem.
It's very nice to meet you guys, thank you for having us here. My name is Shane Weiner, I'm one of the directors for Socio Health and Wellness. This is Kevin Eland, who is one of our health benefits managers. And what we'd like to present is, we'd like to provide a health and wellness event for the county. We want to provide it for the employees. Some of the services that we'd like to provide are, well, this is the engagement process, but we're going to skip ahead because I don't want to take up too much of your time. Basically, what we've been doing for the last three years, we've been providing health and wellness events for different corporations in different counties. We've done Atlanta, we've done the municipalities in Atlanta, we've done Coca-Cola, many different organizations, to say the least, which we'll get to. We show up and we provide different services for the individuals that work for the county. So, for example, whatever employees you have, we come out, we check their allergies. We check for allergies, we check for food sensitivity. The reason that we check for these, this is one of the events that we've done with the CDC down in Georgia as well. And the reason that we check for these different, just skipping ahead here, sorry, for the allergies is because eighty-five percent of Americans have allergies, they're allergic to something. And when we do the allergy test, we're going to find ten different airborne allergies that affect their bodies. And what we can do, once we determine these things that they're allergic to, is we can give them what's called immunotherapy. So, if you're allergic to hay season, and it really adversely affects you, once we put you on immunotherapy over a three-month period, when you go outside during hay season, it won't affect you, so you actually get to function and continue doing your job instead of being homesick. So, it allows the individuals that we're providing these tests for and the service to, to be able to function better in community and live better lives. Then when we check people for food sensitivity, the food sensitivity, we're going to check for one hundred and eighteen different foods that you're sensitive to. And an example I wanted to use is my girlfriend, the first time that she got a food sensitivity test, she found out that her favorite food, she was allergic to it. So, she was allergic to chicken. She freaked out, she was very upset. But we listened to what the doctor said, the doctor advised her that you need to stay off the food for thirty days, reintroduce it to your diet, and see if it still affects you. When she reintroduced it, it caused her to have, you know, extreme pains in the stomach and so forth. So, once she removed these items from her diet, the inflammation that was going on and the different adverse effects that were affecting her went away. She felt healthier, she felt better, she had more energy, and she lived, you know, her life was better, you know, from it. So, our goal is to provide these two main services to the different employees of the county because it's going to give them a better health, a better situation. And this is examples of the different, you know, airborne food tests that we're going to check for, animals, weeds, grass, trees, pollens and dust, different foods that affect the individuals. Another test that we would like to offer is we'd like to do what's called biometric screening. We check for blood pressure, height, weight, your basic health. We give you a chart that you can bring to your doctor afterwards, everything is HIPAA compliant. These numbers are very important for people, this helps, we did, when we did the event for Bank of America, we showed up on the site, we did a biometrics test, and we actually found one of their individuals to have extremely high blood pressure. We had to take him immediately to the hospital, and ultimately, we were able to save his life because he had no idea that he was, you know, in that severe condition. So, knowing these numbers, this is something that people can take with them to their doctors and will be able to help them assess their life choices, you know, the different things, there's a plan that comes with it. We educate them on exercise, on food, a whole package to benefit their health and wellness.
Another thing with this is, it's very simple, is that a lot of people just don't go to the doctor. And if you've been watching TV lately, Cigna has initiative right now, and they have all the, all the TV doctors and stuff like that on air. And what we're trying to do is with preventative, with preventive medicine, we can save over a hundred thousand lives this year.
Yep.
Okay? You know, especially with men, a lot of us just don't go to the doctor, you know? And by just getting this checkup, we can check on the cholesterol, we can check on different things that can be very detrimental to one's health. You know, it's a silent killer, cholesterol, even though we love it, we love everything.
And the best part about this is, with our program, it's a hundred percent covered by insurance, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the employees. So, we're going to come in and we're going to provide it, as long as they have qualified insurance, of course. To those that don't have qualified insurance, we're going to offer them pre-testing for the biometric screening, so that they can get their numbers and get that as well. And that's it, do you guys have any questions?
Ms. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
We already do a health and wellness fair.
Could this be in conjunction with that, or?
The only thing that there, that I heard in this that we are not already doing is the allergy side of it, but other than that, everything else is done. In fact, our health and benefits fair is less than a month away. Health screens are provided, of course, through the local government health insurance program, which I work very closely with.
Is that the insurance you're referring to?
Well, our insurance handles, our insurance program covers.
I understood him say this was a hundred percent covered by insurance.
Well, once you get them into, like, for instance, if somebody like we've had, we've had, what he, what they've alluded to about the person with high blood pressure, we've had those instances. We've been doing this program for several years now, where employees have come in not realizing that they've had high blood pressure, or cholesterol, or even other things that come from this biometric testing type stuff, that they get, they, once they are screened for it, they are referred, they get to go to their doctor. Through our program, the co-pay is waived, and of course, obviously, the insurance program covers whatever it is that is the doctor prescribed, or the doctor works on to try to get, whatever it is that is needing to be addressed by the, their health condition.
Let me ask it this way, I go to that health fair, I get in some testing, I don't pay anything, does my health insurance pay for that testing?
The program's paying for the testing. The health insurance program pays for that program.
Correct.
And they're going to pay for two?
No.
Do we add this, they're going to pay for another?
What, what they would pay for is, if we came in, because you guys are already doing the biometrics and so forth, they would allow us to come in, because we do this with a lot of different companies, they already have wellness programs, and we would just add on the allergy testing, so that at least you're getting that for your, for the, for the employees. We wouldn't, we wouldn't bring in the other things because you currently already have that benefit for the employees, so there's no need to add that. So, we would just add it into your program and allergy testing.
Will our insurance pay for that?
Yeah.
So, y'all have already talked to the local government health insurance program in Montgomery?
We've actually verified, you guys, the pending, we only verified a specific group in, in, in the employees, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, you guys have a PPL, and we've already worked that out, we're in network with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're in network with Cigna, Aetna, and so forth. So, our program is designed to work alongside of what you're currently doing, so it would be covered.
How do you do the allergy testing?
So, with the cholesterol, what we do is, we take, since we're only doing allergy testing, we would just do one tube of blood, and then we send it off to the lab. The lab evaluates it for the one hundred and eighteen different things that it could be, and then we would send that, the results directly back to the employee.
We also follow up with that?
That's correct.
We also follow up?
And then we would come back within thirty days to provide the immunotherapy for the employees that choose, that they want to get the immunotherapy to help them, you know, lessen the effects of the allergies that they have.
So, do we have space in our health fair to add an extra station for this? Because I'm assuming that's what we're talking about.
Well, I mean, the thing about it is, unfortunately, this was, while I'm on the agenda, I have nothing in the packet to give you an idea what this is. I would have loved to have some time to research it, and also, since I'm actually the chairman of the board for the local government health insurance program.
Yep.
To actually call the executive director to find out what he knows about all this stuff like that, so I could give you more informed recommendation or stuff like that, but unfortunately, I didn't have any information they would do that.
Do we normally authorize additions to the health fair like this, or is that something y'all can do, once you have enough information?
It's put on by our insurance care.
Well, we, we put it on, it's incoordinated with, it's incoordinated with the program. As far as being able to have this on in a short notice or to find out what exactly that role will be, I don't know, I have to make some phone calls. But again, I didn't, I, you're asking questions that I don't have, don't have, I did not have the information that they will make these, make these phone calls, because this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, I guess, let me back up and ask my question in a different way. Do we normally, I know in the past, we've authorized expenditures for the health fairs when it was necessary, but do you need our authorization in order to add another facet to it?
No, no.
Once you gather that information, can you then make that decision?
No, I would, no, if it's, if it's no cost to the county at all, and, you know, I can get in touch with, you know, I'll call the executive director, the chief executive officer for the program, to find out what relationship there has to be, or what, what would be entailed. But again, I don't know, because again, I have absolutely nothing that I've been able to see, other than what they just presented, and to be able to find out what would take.
Well, let me ask this question, are y'all doing this with any county or city in Alabama right now?
Currently, no.
Okay. That would tell me the program has.
Yeah, let me say this, I did my research, and I know a little bit about it, because I think John, you approached me about this, and that was basically on the agenda when we operate. And the first thing I asked him is in a call to the county commission, we should know. I said, the first thing, because I don't, if somebody comes, they're going to answer a call. But what I see, and I agree with John, what he's saying, and I told, at the same time, she did the same thing, that if we can bring somebody else in here, to save some of our employees, they can fight side, because a lot of these people leaving here with cancer and stuff like that. When I looked at the information I received, that could do that, and I talked to some of the doctors about that, and see, y'all had mentioned the lab, the doctor, and the doctor, that's what I'm saying. Because even my doctor, I told them about that, they want to get some more, because they include that, because that's free. If we can save some lives, if we can help some of our employees, we can fight some of that, some of these people here doing. Yeah, you know, if there's no call to the county, you know, who can be against that?
John, the things that are life-saving, we're already doing, when they draw blood and do that stuff, and we've already had incidences where some things have happened with high blood pressure, I think it was highway department personnel, wasn't it? About ten years ago, when that happened, when they took him directly to the hospital, and probably saved his life. Now, I've got an issue, but just excuse me, it's free, it's not free, Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, anything we add cost to the system down in Montgomery, we pay for premiums. Well, you know, the thing about it is, and again, I'm not, as county administrator, right now, especially just where we are, I'd say I don't see anything you guys would have, allergy stuff's kind of interesting, so.
Yep.
Because if the program ran what we do, I'd be very skeptical and hesitant, especially since, I mean, literally, we have a full, annual program that comes up in about two weeks.
One month?
Two weeks, isn't it? On the fair, there's like.
One month.
Is it? It's on the twenty? Okay.
But here the thing about it is, as my other role that I've been, I'm actually interested in actually having you talk to our state program.
Okay.
To see if there's something worth picking up from there, because I know we do not do the allergy thing, that's one time. But maybe we're, we're going to, you guys will.
Well, one thing that, one thing that I like to add.
You're holding density screening, all the mission tests.
Well, I didn't get the information to get to them, because like I said, I literally have nothing to go on.
That means it's hard, and that way we can communicate, like, and send you everything, that way you'll have a, you know, everything.
A lot of, a lot of corporate entities that we've talked to have health fairs already, they have them already, okay? But we come in with the allergy screening and testing, and it's been very beneficial to, to the employees.
And if, if that's so, and if it's free, let's add it to every county in the state, I'd love to have allergy testing.
Yep.
But I also understand that we pay a premium to our captive health insurance group, and if they're going to charge us more, then it's not free.
Well, then, it's, it's, it's something that won't be raising.
So, what I would suggest is, we're, I'll, I will work with him.
Okay.
So that he can verify it, but very rarely does allergy testing raise a premium. There's certain things that will raise a premium, but as long as you're staying in the guidelines and working, you know, with the insurance companies, because we're in network with them, then we can make sure that anything that would raise a premium, we wouldn't bring that to the table, so.
Then I would think that program wants you at every fair they do.
Exactly, and that's what we're looking forward to, because my, my job and my passion is to save those hundred thousand lives this year.
So, is this just your first foray into Alabama?
It is, it's my, my first forum in Alabama, and hopefully, it's going to be a great forum here in Alabama. Because if we can help Alabamans, we can help Floridians, if we can help Atlantans, you know, we'll, I believe Alabama lives matter.
Thank y'all.
Wendy, when is that? Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Our sixth thirty is two thirty.
Sheriff, do you have the next four items?
Yes, sir.
We have the store two in Valley. We have the store three in Valley. We have Pizza De Action in Valley, and Speed Zone in Smith Station. First three are in District Four, and the last one's in District Three. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you have given us a letter saying you've not seen any objections on any of these, and all are transfers, and one's initial, three transfers.
I believe three transfers and one new application. These actual geographic locations have served in these capacities before as restaurants or stores, retail stores. They have had previous licenses under ABC coverage in previous years.
All right. I want to actually attempt another commission.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the store two, the store three, and Pizza De Action, and I'll leave the third one to Commissioner Long.
All right. Got a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, signal five, say a aye.
One quick question.
Okay.
Sheriff, were there any churches, schools, other entities of concern, close by any of these places?
No, sir, we're aware.
I'm familiar with these three.
Okay, good, thank you. We have three, three motions in three seconds. All in favor, signal five, say a aye. Any opposed? Mr. Long?
All right, I'll make the motion that we bring a transfer to Speed Zone.
Motion and second, other discussion. All in favor, signal five, say a aye. Any opposed? Motion denied. Mr. Hardy?
How many bids we're looking at?
Well, exactly, it's my question, is.
We've got eight, we're going to look at their first, first bids, and then we have some extensions of bids that were put in place last year, approved bid package that allows us to extend them in compliance with the competitive bid law. The ones for this year, the first bid is bid number seven, this is our annual maintenance bid for the full depth reclamation, this is the process that helps, that helps us reconstruct our roadways for our resurfacing projects. We sent bids out to eight vendors, we received two bids, one from D and J Enterprises, and one from Chris Park Grading and Paving, based on an evaluation of the bids, and it is for different forms of the full depth reclamation on different forms of existing roads, meaning is it a paved road that they're planning up, is it a gravel road, is it a tar and gravel road, at different depths. The information was provided in the packets, I can go through the specific prices for all of those, if you would like for me to, or just tell you that the evaluation from the Howie Department is that D and J Enterprises is the lowest responsible bidder, and would make the recommendation that the county could award this bid for this year's full depth reclamation to D and J Enterprises.
We're going to do all of them.
If we can do that.
Unless there's any, anybody object?
Bid number, bid number eight was our bulk cement, this is the cement product that goes along with our full depth reclamation. We received only one bid for this, and under the competitive bid law, we reject the bid allowing the Howie Department to negotiate a price for that product. What was it for? Bulk cement.
Bulk cement, debris.
Bid number nine was hydro seating and bulging, we received no bids for that. To receive no bids, yes, ma'am. We'll be checking with the vendors to see, we sent the same bid package that we sent previously, I'm not sure if they didn't get it in on time, or if there was something that was of concern, we will be reaching out to those prospective bidders and see if there was a concern, or if they just didn't get something back to us.
Justin, I've got a number ten for guard rail, and number ten for like two most tricky.
And that's because those bid numbers are from last year, which are our first year extensions that we'll get to. But there are duplicate numbers, that's because that was the bid number.
I do have a cement one in here, because I've been through it twice.
No, sir, we do not have it. Any one we are rejecting, we have, we have the one bid, I'm going to leave those in the packets, we're not asking to take action on awarding it, it's the rejection of that, of that bid. Bid number nine, the hydro seating, as I mentioned, we received no bids, there's no action to take there, we will be following up there to see what we need to do and possibly do in that service. Bid number ten is for guard rail, we sent the bids to six vendors, received two back, one from H and L Construction, and the other from C and H Construction Services. Upon evaluation of these bids, and comparing them then to the southeastern region bid that the commission approved for us to participate in, it appears that the southeast region bid is the one that we need to go with, so we request that.
Well, that's working.
Yes.
Wow.
We request that we reject all of the Lee County bids, the bid of Lee County in using the southeast region bid. And that's bid number ten. And that's bid number ten for guard rail for this fiscal year. Bid number eleven was for maintenance stone, and we received one bid for that, and again, we'd like to reject that bid and negotiate, uh, for the maintenance stone that we use. Bid number twelve is for cold mix, this is what we use for patching potholes. We sent bids to four vendors, we received two bids back. Upon review of the bids, the first bid was, one response was advanced asphalt product, the second was Chris Clark Grading and Paving. Upon evaluation of the bids, feel it's in the best interest of Lee County, the highway department recommends the bid be awarded to Chris Clark Grading and Paving for the plant cold mix.
That's the second one we're actually gonna award.
Yes, sir.
Number seven, fifty yard.
Yes, sir. And then number twelve, the cold mix. Uh, bid number thirteen was for ready mixed concrete, it was also one we received only one bid, and request to reject the bid and negotiate. Bid number fourteen was for seating and mulching and bales of grass hay. Uh, we received no bids for seating and mulching, and only one bid for bale of grass hay, so we would like to reject that bid as well, and allow it to negotiate. So we can make sure we're getting competitive prices, instead of just accepting the one price that we got, not knowing if it is in fact the best or not. Which complies with the bid law.
Make sure you understand, and this is our first.
These are, these are our first year bids, and that's why those numbers correspond with those. So the next set of bids that we will discuss are first extensions, these are bids that were put in place last year by the county commission. They were bids, uh, shown to the bid law and put in place by the county commission at that time. Uh, we, in evaluating the prices on these, and the experience we've had for the last year with these vendors. We extended the option to renew these bids if the vendors were willing to honor the same price. And these are the ones that were willing to honor the same price, and we wish to extend this bid. So for the extension of the fiscal year fifteen sixteen bids, bid number nine, delivered botuminous treatment and temporary traffic strike. This is our asphalt bid, East Alabama Paving Company Incorporated, uh, agreed to extend it, the last commission to, to award that extension. Bid number ten is picked up at the plant botuminous treatment. This is where our trucks go to their facility and pick up the asphalt necessary for small patching jobs, for our bridge approaches, anything we're using our paving equipment for. Uh, also is in Alabama Paving Company. Bid number twelve, emulsified asphalt with ergon asphalt and emulsions, this is the tar, for lack of a better term. That is in, used in our patch truck, our one man pothole patching unit, uh, that we use. And the last commission to award that. Bid number thirteen is traffic strike, Hornsby Striking Company has, has that bid this last year, agreed to extend. Bid number fourteen, thermoplastic traffic control markings, legends, and raised pavement markers, which is other forms of traffic control on the roadway. Hornsby Striking Company again has those, and would like to extend. And then bid number seventeen, gasoline and diesel fuel, Petroleum Purchasing Inc., doing business as Petro South, uh, is in agreement to extend, uh, under terms of that contract. So those are our first extensions that we would ask the commission to award. We'll be awarding two new bids for this year, rejecting, negotiating five bids, no actions on the hydro seating and mulching. And then extending one, two, three, four, five, six bids for extending from last year.
We got one no bids, that's hydro seating.
Yes, sir.
Five were jams, two awarded, and then six extended.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'd like to move forward through the recommendation of the county chairman.
Any other discussion?
I got it.
All in favor, sitting in the top of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Hardy, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make it in that one, for that complete form.
Very, very clear. Thank you.
Rendman has a budget adjustment.
Yes, sir, in the, uh, the packet, there should be a little memo, this is for the courthouse annex project. We are actually gotten a ninety percent complete with the design development, construction document. Uh, and we actually completed this a little bit ahead of schedule, and, uh, the, uh, all the, uh... So, what was expected to be in next year's budget actually has already been incurred in this year, this fiscal year. Which is the, uh, some of the architectural engineering costs that go along with the project, and all the questions the commission to, oh, go ahead. Recognize the hundred thousand in the capital improvement fund, uh, that was designated already, it was pre-designated in the fund, uh, for the courthouse annex project. But to be able to get these invoices paid in this fiscal year, I need to go ahead and get an adjustment to recognize it in the current fiscal year. So I'm asking you to, uh, recognize a hundred thousand dollars in the designated fund balance for the courthouse annex project. With Fund one sixteen capital improvement fund, and adjust the budget accordingly, so I can pay, uh, the engineers and architects.
I'll make a motion with that effect.
Second.
Motion in the second, and that is in, I want to make sure I understand, that is in the budget year we are in for the next four days.
Yeah, that is correct, yeah, that is correct, because the invoices are dated in September, I've gotta pay them in September.
Right. Have a motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor, sitting in the top of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Hey, Mr. Rendman?
Yes, sir.
All we have left is the budget.
Yes, sir. Should have in your packet, I've already emailed this to you, also in the packets, as a kind of an overview of the sixteen seventeen budget. I'm actually not gonna read the whole entire thing, because my throat is starting to close up on me. Uh, but the most, most important thing about it is, is that we do have merit raises included for the first time. The first time in three years, and it's only the second time in the last eight years for the employees. When I went back and looked at it, I had to double check to make sure that was correct, and it was. And so I'm sure that will be very helpful to the employee morale, especially the employees that have been here for a while. The also, the, the monies in the budget for the new recycling facility manager that we created to go along with the new right recycling facility. That is about, uh, they, I imagine, getting pretty close to being operational, we're ready to go here in shortly, it's, uh, it's already been completed. Uh, we're just going through punchless items right now with that facility. Also, there's three more positions added, uh, to the highway crew to help get some additional personnel out on the roads to help with the maintenance that the engineer asked for. And we're trying to help him with that. Uh, the rest of the stuff is just highlight, again, because, uh, it's just highlights of what's in the budget, or what's slightly changed in the budget. We did not, we're not able to get the cost of living adjustment that we were planning on getting, but again, we, it's discussed in the, hold on a second. In the work sessions, we have money in the budget, that if by mid-year our projections for seventeen hold true. And we will also start getting all of our estimates, uh, in, uh, initially around February of seventeen, the eighteen year. If all those numbers hold true to what we expect, then we will come back to you, uh, with a recommendation to, uh, for a pay scale adjustment. To get us caught, finally caught up with the Southern Urban CPI, and right now, that would be about a three point three five percent. But we did not have enough money to do a full year, it's budgeted for half year. Uh, we're not commit to it though, until obviously we see that these numbers come in. Basically, what I'm asking, uh, for you to do, also, uh, in this, you'll see that there's a page behind you that gives you all the outside agency and corporations. As was presented, where is my sheets? Yeah. If you look at those lists, and you'll see over, it should be highlighted in dark, it's the two thousand seventeen proposed. The first column past that would be the difference from last year, and the last column is the actual difference from the request that was submitted. The two actions that I require from the commission that I'm asking for tonight is, first of all, the commission is to, to adopt the two thousand sixteen seventeen budget as presented. That is the sheet that it actually is behind, that has the word proposed. As you know, we passed the budget at the fund level, this will be actually the official budget. Uh, of course, when the budget book comes out, it actually breaks down in much more detail, by department, uh, by general categories and so forth. But as far as the official budget, this is what is, you're actually being asked to pass. Overall, it's a, based on revenue, we have a thirty-seven thou, thirty-seven million, seven hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollar budget. The revenue side, which would I consider the ongoing, which we're budgeting, and the expenditure side is thirty-nine million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. Which obviously, that is, uh, funded by some, carried over some things that have been specifically designated in fund balance for the next year. The only thing that we will come back for after this budget is the capital for the general fund. Based on projections, I was able to really nail down the highway departments, and the highway department's capital is now actually included in there for the, as far as what Mr. Hardy's requested. I feel very good about those numbers, so his capital has already been included in this budget for next year. And we will probably come back first week in November to discuss capital for the general fund. Because I really want to get a solid year, uh, get the year closed out to see where we stand in fund balance. Part of the reason why is, obviously, we tried to meet as many capital made as possible. But for, uh, we will also probably be getting underway with the bid for the, uh, annex project, and I would like to try to get as much, uh, money, uh, put aside for that project also. To pay more cash for that project means we have to borrow less money, and that was what we'll discuss in November. But as far now, what's presented to you is the proposed two thousand seventeen budget. That'll be the first action, is to pass basically this sheet of paper. And once you pass that, the second will be to authorize the chairman, uh, to execute funding agreements for the ABCs and the non-NCs. On the service contracts appropriation list for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, again, that is the longer sheet than the last sheet that's in the packet. Any questions regarding the budget?
Yes, of course, uh, I heard all these agencies have changed it fully, I'm a mission, I got a concern about that, and I did get an email from the jury, uh, he didn't get to speak, but... You go ahead, if you, if it came with the permission, I know he wanted to say, go ahead and speak, or not, Roger, I was kind of concerned about the email I received. I wouldn't be opting to speak, but I'll.
Anybody here to object, I'm hearing from Judge Fellows?
No, not here.
Good.
Sure, I'm Mike Fellows, I'm the, uh, Lee County Family General Court Judge, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you for a moment. Um, my understanding is, in the proposed budget, is, um, a decrease in the funding for our juvenile volunteer, um, resource program. Um, that, I'm not sure how many years that's, um, been funded, but I do know that since I got on the bench in two thousand eleven. We've already seen about a twenty-five percent decrease in the funding from the county. Now, that came frankly because I saw a period of time where, because we had cut some staff, I wasn't gonna use that money that year. And so I was trying to be a good steward of the county's money, and said to the commission when we sent in our funding request, don't give me as much this year as you gave last year. Um, and it stayed that way for several years. Now, I don't, I don't know how often that happens in the course of government business, I know it doesn't happen much in the course of mine. But I just felt that was the obligation, the right thing to do. We, as many of you will know, the court system overall has been very unfunded. I think University of Alabama gets more money from the state than the court system does. But, um, as a result of that, put together with the fact that, as you very well know, Lee County's growing by leaps and bounds. And, um, that's put an extreme load on our judicial system. Um, it's become very necessary to have as many volunteer programs and as many administrative staff as possible. Um, I mentioned one of, I'm not sure which, but I'm, I'm, just in my court alone, I'm doing the job accorded to the state of about one point seven judges. Um, and in order to do that, I gotta have help. Um, because I'm on the bench basically all the time, and I have to have help from some of these volunteer programs, from staff. Um, I have a, when I came on, I had three administrative staff, I'm down to two now. Um, had hoped frankly, to, kind of felt like maybe I was in a position where there was instability that we might could refill that position, at least on a part-time basis. But in large part, that was counting on the, you know, this money, um, from the commission. Um, that's part of the revenue source that would supply that, that position, because we're having to use a lot of local funds now. So, you know, I, I'm not really disputing some of the things that are looked at as alternative uses for the money. Um, I honestly, I don't know a lot about it, but what I do know is not bad. Um, it's just that we're in a situation where every, every little bit counts. I kind of voluntarily cut myself, maybe I shouldn't have done that, but I did. And, uh, it would hurt substantially more to, to be cut again, and so I just appreciate you guys' consideration in that.
Uh, reading I had, I'm speaking, I'm gonna pass some information down to the other commission, and I want a amendment to the budget, uh, that Mr. Rendman got, on the proposition. That, uh, an amendment I got, you could see before you, the family rich was sending a bid twenty-two thousand, because y'all already got three thousand dollars in the budget. So that'll be twenty-five hundred dollars, well, shoot, then, they give eight thousand and five hundred and two dollars, and the historical society, and the local public get two thousand five hundred dollars. Same thing as the East Alabama, uh, I mean, the, the East Alabama historical society is overlapping, so I feel like that would be fair. And we can restore all these other agencies in the same before you, that's the only thing I can look at, and figure that we have, and it is that, right, if we're about to go on.
This proposal here, to me, speaks loudly that we're supporting the family and children. Good fellows, thank you for coming, and once again, thank you for cutting your own budget there when you realized you didn't need that. And that's just unheard of, but that just says something about your character, and thank you so much. So I think this speaks loudly to the fact that we want to support families and children. Don't want to say that.
Mr. Rendman?
Yes, sir.
If we were to use the same concept of leaving these agencies whole, and, uh, what I see here is they're... Funding the enrichment center at twenty-two thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, they already get three thousand and twenty-five thousand, no, that's correct.
Okay, but you'd be adding twenty-two thousand to the budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. In order to not... Come in and remove funding from the Porshi Bin Library and the Lee County Historical Society this year, uh, and there's a caveat to this. Is there a way we could, uh... Ask you to look at the budget and let you find the monies either in, uh, other expenses? I.e. office expenses, travel, train, and things like that, and just, uh, spread it out across the budget, where everybody maintains a whole status this year? With the understanding that in March of next year, we start bringing each of these agencies in yellow to come in and talk to us about exactly what they're doing. Uh, number one, and number two, how their dollars are spent to benefit Lee County. And then number three, especially in Judge Fellows' case, do you see that you're gonna need to revisit, uh, a higher allocation because of expanding services? Now, I don't want to do that to encourage people to come in asking for, you know, a trupling of their accounts, but I don't think we're making a whole lot of headway sometimes with how we do this. And, uh, that way, we don't have to move any monies from one agency to the other this year, but it would allow you the flexibility to determine the best, uh, way to fill this small twenty-two thousand dollar gap. I would, uh, ask if that's something that you feel comfortable doing, or would you need more direction from the commission?
Need more direction from the commission.
Okay, and in what way?
I mean, it just depends on where you, where you want to target, I mean, you want a specific area, or you have to start looking across the board and make that, like, consider doing that, I was like... Areas that... We, I mean, we have very few areas, I mean, there, there aren't really any areas, if you go look at our line, you know, our grouping of lines, there's not a whole lot of areas that do a whole lot of discretion any particular department has. But I mean, the areas that I'd say, yeah, the departments have the most leeway in is obviously the office supplies, other supplies, uh, travel and train. And those are where they have the most direct, uh, effects, it's really hard to cover, you know, fuels prices or something that I wouldn't, you know... Sometimes fuel is an area, but then again, it's one of those areas we don't have control over the, over the price. Maintenance is another area that we can make cuts in, but again, that eventually you pay, pay for that, uh, when your facilities are, you know, when they're struggling to a degree now. We're doing a better job of it, but you obviously take steps back and you start cutting there, but, you know, when you sit here and look at medical costs in the jail, that's not a place I can cut. Insurance property of insurance is an area you don't want to cut. So when you start looking at it, your only areas are gonna be train travel, uh, you know, you can do fuel possibly, do maintenance possibly, which is suggested, then office supplies. So if you took thirty thousand, I just, sit here, play down, if you took thirty thousand dollars in the general fund, you're trying to find thirty, excuse me, if you're trying... you're trying.
You have allergies?
Can you do a test?
Anyway.
I don't know who said it was priceless. Somebody's gonna need testing.
Anyway, uh, I know my allergies are. Um, anyway, the, like office supplies, we spread it over office supplies for every department in the general fund, that would be a four point five, four point six percent cut across all departments in the general fund to come up with thirty thousand dollars. If you were to cut train and travel across all departments in the general fund, that is a twenty two percent cut for every department in the train and travel. But, I mean, so, you know, pick your.
Pick your boys.
Pick your boys. You know, how you, you know.
Well, I, I just felt like we need to at least explore that and have that as a alternative as well.
So, the reason I thought about it, John, I was.
Mr. Rendman, let me ask you a question. In your proposal here, you're going from three thousand to twenty two thousand for the enrichment center, and you go cut the library sixty four percent and historical society seventy three percent. Is the rest of it in what Mr. Rendman proposed, or is the rest of it level funded?
The rest of it level funded.
Level from last year on all these others?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was it. Uh, Lee, I was saying that, just, I got a, uh, lot of call to me, very concerned, and I looked at, you know, first what I said, uh, Mr. Robert Ham said, and some other commissions said, these agents do work for the commission. They really serve the commission. And even when the family enrichment center came, I got a third call there. And I can say that, and I didn't want to mess with Justin, because we got a lot of call from the highway department. Somebody called me the other day, he said, Justin, all the work they doing. And even I have to be on the sheriff department credit. They got us set. You know, he need more, we know from the sheriff department. But everybody needs service from the sheriff department. So I, I said, well, only thing that I can say was, you know, we do a little bit of like what Mr. Rendman said, we can come up there, because we need to move in a way that we can try to help everybody. We ain't got the, that works mighty to move. And Mr. Rendman, I appreciate you.
I just, I felt better about what we did last week because this just eviscerates the second too. And I just, um, it's hard to do to a nonprofit.
Mr. Rendman, I think you did an excellent job of fitting the puzzle together, and it's a jacked puzzle you're working on, and the direction that we gave you in, in the other meetings, especially for the employee raises. And, uh, I think everybody was certainly behind that, and, and I think you accomplished everything we, we asked you to. And I commend you for a good job on that. And, uh, I'd like to make a proposal that we, uh, members that we, that we pass this, uh, budget proposal and, uh, including the, uh, the contract appropriations.
All right, you want to be clear, Kevin, what you trying to pass?
Sorry, trying to pass the, uh.
One-page budget sheet?
One-page budget sheet.
All right.
And the, um, and, uh.
Budget.
I need the budget passed.
First.
First.
But this is in the budget.
That's at the budget. So you're gonna change the budget, I didn't know what we were gonna change the budget by. Okay? But I mean, not, I don't.
Why don't we go to?
Not for the list. I'd like to hear that. But if you're gonna change up on budget, I need to know what that means.
I think we, you, I made an amendment to the budget. We've changed it some.
It's not, you're not changing any of the dollar amounts.
He's not changing any dollar amounts.
Bottom line stays the same.
Let me give this. I think, uh, you got, okay. I think, uh, all right, the, uh, I guess the proposal is to, um, accept the, um, the budget for the sixteen seventeen fiscal year. The county administrator has proposed to us and, uh, including the amendment, uh, like Mr. Harris.
So I understand correctly, the amendment does not change the total dollars in the one-page budget. Is that what you understand?
Right. It's really, really changed the budget. That's what, we're gonna change appropriation list.
We're amending the appropriations list.
Right.
All right. Motion and a second.
Can I ask a quick question? Since the appropriations list is the contentious part of the budget, I don't think there's any concerns about the other part. Can we put the amendment of the, are we gonna have the amendment of the appropriations as a second item?
No, sir. It's, this.
Is included in his motion?
Is in the one-page budget. And if this is going to change the total dollars, you've gotta know what that is to change this. He's trying to pass the budget with no change in the total dollars by amending the appropriation list, item by item, but not overall changing it at all.
I understand.
Thank you.
Did I say that correctly?
That's exactly what my intent was.
Do we have a motion and a second?
We have a motion and a second. To adopt the one-page budget and the amendment to the appropriations list.
Which is this?
And I just, I wanna make sure what this amendment, like a better word, is doing. It's bringing family enrichment center to twenty two thousand, it's bringing Horseshoe Bend Library to eighty five oh two, historical society to twenty five hundred, and all of the other items in yellow will be at the twenty sixteen budget amount.
Correct.
Well, clear?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there's no interest in separating the, uh, appropriations list from then the budget?
Well, Johnny, it's, it's in there.
No, okay, that's just say, that's just say, if you're long run changing the overall budget, we went and passed the budget. Because the second action is you're actually approving this list for us to enter into our agreements.
We're missing contracts.
So if you're gonna change this, we can do that in the second action. We don't have to.
As long as the total dollars don't change.
The total of all the, overall budget number does not change. In other words, if we do not increase our budget from, if we don't increase, if we don't increase the general fund budget more than, general fund budget is a twenty six million, two hundred thirty seven thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars. As long as you're not going to change that overall number, we can go ahead and adopt the budget. If you can change how the numbers fill out here, that's the second.
Right.
The second action is then, you got, the commission authorizing the chairman to enter into the appropriation agreements with these agencies for these amounts.
But we don't know yet this is gonna pass.
Well, personally, if you don't, if you don't pass, if you don't pass this tonight, then we're not sending out any agreements to any agency for any amount. And we could go on month after month if you want to on this.
Oh, please.
But we need to have this passed before October. Yeah, we have to pass this by October first.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the appropriation discussion does not necessarily need with this discussion as long as you're not gonna change that overall amount.
But the motion covered both of them, right?
It did.
The motion covers the one-page budget and the amendment.
That's correct.
And the second.
I just, I can't support the amendment. I think it's mean spirited.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Budget carries on vote of four to one by year nine, okay? Budget carries on vote of four to one. All right, your next requested action is to authorize the funding agreements.
Basically authorize you to be able to enter into the, the contracts reflecting this change.
All right.
Move for approval. Second.
So I'm clear, since I got a sum. The lines in yellow, eighteen eight seventy four goes to eighty five oh two. Child Advocacy Center goes from ten thousand, eight hundred to thirteen thousand, five hundred. We're going with the twenty sixteen level funding, is what I understood, John, besides?
That's, I understand.
Yeah, everything in the left-hand column is stat.
Except for.
Until.
Except these.
Except for those two.
The first is.
Yeah.
Horseshoe Bend Library.
Four three five ninety two goes to.
In the twenty seventeen proposed, they had twenty three five ninety two proposed by Mr. Rendman tonight, it was eighteen eight seventy four, per your recommendation last week, and tonight's amendment takes it to eight thousand five hundred and two dollars. Child Advocacy Center, last year was thirteen five, twenty percent reduction would have taken them to ten eight, but we're gonna fund them thirteen five. All right, E's House will stay level at ninety five twenty six. Judicial Volunteer will stay level at twelve thousand. Valley Haven School, seven thousand one hundred forty four. Soil and Water, twenty five seventy two. Domestic Violence, level at forty five hundred. Auburn Daycare, level at five thousand five hundred fifty seven. Museum of East Alabama, level at twenty six fifty. American Red Cross, eleven thousand nine seventy three. Community Market, two thousand six hundred and fifty. County Firefighters Association, four thousand. GND and Riff, fifteen eighty eight. Historical Society was ninety four ten last year, proposal tonight was seventy five twenty eight, and the new amount's two thousand five hundred dollars. The Family Enrichment Center was three thousand last year, the proposal was twenty five six thirty two, tonight it's reduced to twenty two thousand dollars. The Salvation Army is level at twenty five hundred dollars.
We're adding twenty two to theirs.
Yep, adding twenty two to the Family Enrichment Center.
Well, this says twenty two thousand dollars.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
Well, then the other amounts are wrong too?
No, actually, if you, the cuts, basically the bottom, what, what you, what it looks like is, the proposal was to cut Horseshoe Bend and the Lee County Historical Society to fund a twenty two thousand dollar increase to Family Enrichment. So I'll take them from, uh, three thousand to twenty five thousand. Is that how I read that?
That's correct.
Twenty five thousand.
Correct.
And the Salvation Army level at twenty five hundred.
Right.
Is that the understanding on the appropriation?
Yes, sir.
And a motion and a second. Other discussion? All in favor, signify if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries on a vote of three to two. The last salaries, Mr. Rendman, I didn't see that in your memo.
That's, that's not.
No?
Yeah, we passed ours.
All right. Well, then, tell your motion to the jury.
Please do, Jerry.
All in favor, say aye.